It was me in order, can we all please stand for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Culpepper.
Present.
Dr. Denson.
President.
Mr. Griffiths.
Here.
Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia.
Present.
Mr. Willis. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get approval of the agenda, please?
I would move for approval of the agenda dated August 28, 2019.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Willis, seconded by Commissioner Willis, I mean Mia, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I have an announcement I'd like to read. The Southfield Planning Commission is a seven-member board appointed by the mayor with approval by the city council that acts in advisatory capacity to the council to make recommendations on text amendments to the Southfield zoning ordinance, rezoning requests, special land uses, site plan reviews, the Southfield master plan, and the capital improvement plan. All study meetings and regular meetings are open to the public in accordance with the Open Meeting Act of PA 267 of 1976, and are held on Wednesday evenings at 6:30. Many agendas are posted the Friday evening before the next Wednesday meeting and are available for viewing at cityofsouthfield.com. Copies of plans, text amendments, the master plan, and the capital improvement plan are available for viewing at the planning department offices, and current projects can be viewed using our online interactive tool on the planning department's homepage, planning department's projects online. Contact planning department at (248) 796-4150, with questions Monday through Friday, 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock. Do we have any announcements or communications?
Uh, yeah, I do have, with regard to a couple of items that are on the agenda this evening, uh, the first one, PSLU 19-0006, and the accompanying site plan PSP 19-0005. If you recall, uh, those, that, uh, this particular project came before you last month, did get postponed to this month, uh, however, we are awaiting a meeting between the petitioner and the property owners, uh, there to discuss that project, that has not happened yet. Uh, we are trying to get a meeting scheduled for September 18th, uh, so that the petitioner, I'm, uh, yes, 18th, so that the petitioner and the residents, uh, in that area can, can get together, uh, and talk about the proposed project. So what staff is recommending this evening is a postponement to your September agenda, that would be September 25th, uh, 2019, regular meeting, and again, that is for item number two, PSLU 19-0006 under public hearings, and then item number two under the site plans, PSP 19-0005.
Okay. To the Chair. Commissioner Culpepper.
I so moved that PSLU 19-006 and PSP 19-005 be postponed to a date certain, September 25th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, supported by Commissioner Willis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that will be postponed to September 25th. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing, first on the agenda, we have PZR 19-0004.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so we do have, uh, the rezoning request and the site plan, uh, for this particular location, uh, so we'll actually be presenting at the same time both the rezoning and the site plan, uh, you will then, uh, have a requirement to go through a public hearing on the rezoning portion, uh, take care of that, and then move to the site plan after that. Uh, so again, with regard to the rezoning request, uh, PZR 19-0004, this is a rezoning request of Andy Mosiv, MGA Architects, for the property located 24700 Northwestern Highway. As you can see on the maps on the screen, uh, this particular property is on the east side of Evergreen Road, uh, between 10 Mile Road and Northwestern Highway, uh, 123.net is, is the name of the company that's currently on that property. Uh, the proposal is to rezone 1.8 acres of land from P vehicular parking to ERO Education Research Office, uh, ERO is the current zoning on the balance of the property, uh, so what the petitioner is looking to do is, is rezone that 1.8 acres, uh, to similar zoning as, as the rest of the property. Again, the reason why this is going on, uh, is because the petitioner, or the owner, uh, had been cited for outside storage, uh, on this particular site, uh, so in order to bring them into compliance, uh, the petitioner would need to rezone the property, currently as parking, you can't build a building within that particular zoning district, so it would require rezoning to ERO in order to do that. So that's the rezoning portion, uh, the site plan portion, uh, for the same property is to allow for the construction of a 10,000 square foot building, and, let me go to the site plan portion here, I'll kind of flip through these, I can come back to it. Uh, so that's the site plan, uh, you can see, uh, to the east of, of the existing buildings on the site, in, uh, the parking area, is a proposal for the storage building. Uh, if you recall, at your study meeting of, of this month, um, there were numerous concerns with regard to the generators that are currently along Red River, uh, as well as, uh, the, uh, the makeup, or, or what the, the particular building looks like from the standpoint of materials. Uh, the petitioner has gone, uh, to the owners of the property, and if I may, that's kind of a, an example of the outside storage, uh, that the property was cited for. So the petitioner, uh, again, had originally proposed arborvitae along Red River, uh, there was a concern about maybe those would not be, uh, provide enough screening, so the petitioner did go back to the owner, the owner has agreed to place an eight-foot wall, as well as the, uh, the arborvitae along Red River, and you'll be able to see that shown on the landscape plan, uh, that's not the colored portion of the landscape plan, but you can see along, um, Red River portion, uh, there, uh, I believe are approximately 60 arborvitae that will go along that edge, along with the eight-foot, uh, wall. From the standpoint of the elevations of the proposed building, uh, this is the proposal that the petitioner has brought forward, and again, it's, it's meant to try and mimic the existing building on site, uh, it will be a little bit closer to, uh, Red River, but they did want to try and pick up the same, uh, elements as the existing building has. Um, with that, Mr. Mosiv is here this evening, uh, and I would ask that, that he come up and explain this project further for the, for the commission and the public.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Andrew Mosiv, uh, Mosiv Gordon Associates, 4351 Delamere Court, Royloke, Michigan.
Thank you.
Um, as Mr. Spence, uh, stated, um, my client, 123net, uh, occupies the, uh, seven-story building at that location, uh, and using it for a data center and his offices, uh, there's some other, uh, tenant space there, um, for a, a data center, and the data center is constantly needing, um, improvements, and, uh, the rest of his business is, uh, fiber optics that, throughout the state, you know, often see his trucks, uh, out and about, uh, doing directional drilling and overhead, and in order to, uh, be a better neighbor and, uh, clean up his site, we're looking at produce, uh, developing this building to put all the storage inside and clean up the site and be a more presentable neighbor, uh, to the, to our neighbors. Pardon me, um, we're, you know, the, we propose, proposing an eight-foot fence, which is what's maximum allowed in the code, um, to try and minimize the impact of the generators along Red River, along with the, um, uh, arborvitae, which we believe over, over time will grow up to, uh, obscure the, uh, generators. As we've illustrated, uh, the first shot, uh, the upper view is, uh, at the time of planting, eight-foot arborvitae, and they will fill in over the years, three years and five years, um, and then, you know, we're leaving the generators, uh, yellow, it's, it's just a pop of color along there, the, the buildings are just gray, and to give some color, and to really show his clients the, the generating capacity that he has. Thank you.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
I, I know we, we kind of commingled the site plan with the rezoning, but the public hearing is only on the merits of the zoning, so until you make, uh, a motion on rezoning itself, I'd ask the commission not to ask any site-specific questions until we get to the site plan portion.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else you want to add?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is a public, uh, hearing, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public, does anyone want to make a statement about this project, just please step forward. Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any questions, concerns about this project, about this rezoning? To the Chair. Commissioner Culpepper.
Uh, first of all, let me say thank you for going back, uh, talking to your owner, doing what, uh, we asked you to do as far as getting the wall, uh, we felt that that was pertinent, although the landscaping is fine with, with the shrubbery, but we felt that wall would be essential, and thank you for that. Question concerning the wall, what will the wall?
Through, through the Chair, through the Chair.
Okay.
We're, we're just, right at this point, we're, you're just, you can ask questions regarding rezoning from P vehicular parking to ERO Education Research Office. After you've made a motion on this, then we'll get into the site plan.
To the Chair.
Okay.
I, I agree with the rezoning, uh, it does need to be rezoned in order to be able to put something on a property that's feasible, so, uh, I'll say my comments for the site plan, sorry about that, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner?
Uh, just a clarification, the ERO zoning, are they, is there a city center overlay district, um, I'm forgetting the?
It, it is.
Is that associated with this at all, or is it a straight ERO?
This is straight ERO, it is in the city center eligible area for an overlay development district, but this is a straight rezoning with, um, the requirements that go with that district.
So in, in theory, there's additional flexibility and creativity here, but we're not necessarily using that for this rezoning. Um, I don't have a problem with it either way, I just, just trying to clarify.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Martin.
To the Chair, I'd like to make a motion that PZR 19-0004 be approved for rezoning to ERO.
Support. Okay, I have a favorable, uh, motion by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Culpepper on the rezoning, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the rezoning portion does pass.
If we could, um, if we could pull up the site plan portion, PSP 19-0004 at this time.
Okay. Can we have the petitioner, please, come forward again? Oh, you want to?
So, yes, if, if you, if the commission has any site-specific questions, this would be the appropriate time, and before they get into the questions, Mr. Mosiv, why don't you just, um, highlight again the changes that you made from our study session with regard to, um, the roof configuration and some of the other things that you did in response to the commissioner's comments.
Um, since our last, uh, meeting at the study session two weeks ago, we've added, starting in the site plan, we added, uh, a fence and gate along the, uh, southwest portion to enclose the, uh, storage generator area, uh, we've added, changed the wall to be an eight-foot tall masonry wall, um, we've changed the, uh, structure of the building to be, to provide, on the north, east, and south faces, um, a flat, uh, level, uh, parapet with, uh, sloping inside towards the, uh, the center of the site to, to ride a, uh, consistent, uh, look, uh, more office look, if you will, rather than a barn look, um, what else did we do? You know, as, as per, uh, requested in, uh, the last, uh, meeting.
Okay, um, commissioners, any questions, concerns?
Commissioner Martin? With the change in the slope, would that necessitate a change in the drainage for the area?
Um, well, it, it makes the drainage just to the, uh, to the west, rather than east and west, um, and, um, I think we're going to have to connect to, uh, the existing, uh, storm sewer system anyways, so I don't, it's not really going to change the, the same amount of paved area and, uh, impervious area, uh, will, is proposed to what is there now. If anything, I mean, perhaps a little bit less, because we've added some, uh, landscape areas to the north of the building.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Uh, appreciate the eight-foot high walls, I think this is a good candidate for taller than an eight-foot high wall, but that's the, the maximum allowed, so that's a good effort in the right direction, and appreciate, um, losing the, the pole barn look in favor of, uh, something that ties in, um, it's a nice, it's a simple-looking building, I know it's not easy to make things look simple and clean like this, but I think it's, it's much more appropriate, uh, for that area, um, you know, if the use is already there, at least to make it look like an office building and blend in better, I think it was, it's going to tie in a lot better, so appreciate the extra effort in the design of, of the barn to lose the, the pole barn-ness of it, you're welcome.
Thank you. To the Chair. Commissioner Culpepper.
As I jumped the gun before, uh, thank you again, as, uh, Commissioner Griffiths said, for, uh, the wall, and you answered my question, what the wall was going to be made of, masonry, and, uh, with the landscaping that you're going to do in that wall, I think that's an added asset to that area, so, uh, you know, with the rezoning, and with you doing what you're going to do, I think the whole area will give a, a different look to the residents, uh, the, the barn look has gone away, and elevation is perfect, so I think you did a good job, and again, thank you for being so cooperative in, uh, doing what we've asked, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mia?
Yes, Sir Chair, uh, we had all, we had also addressed the color, because of that bright yellow, were you going to keep that color, because we did address the color?
Uh, we are proposing.
The wall is not going to block out that bright yellow.
No, but we believe the, uh, arborvitae will over time, um, uh, we are proposing to maintain the yellow, um, you know, we like the idea of a little pop of color along there, um, you know, mixed with the, uh, the green of the arborvitae.
And if I, if I could, through the Chair, seventy-five percent of that would be screened, probably right away with the wall and the arborvitae, but, um, when he was investigating changing the color, um, comment was made that it does provide a pop of color for the people who are inside the office building looking down on this very utilitarian part of the site, and since the majority of the people looking at it are actually workers on the site, as opposed to people driving by, if you've been on Red River, there's a church, and there's one house, there's not a lot of residents looking on, onto the site, so, um, in this particular case, I, I'm supportive of keeping the color, because he's made the attempt to do the screening, and it is kind of drab with the concrete and, and the grays, so, um, if, if that's something that the employees have said that they appreciate, and I'm, I'm in support of it.
Commissioner Martin?
Just as a question, the build, the, uh, generator areas have cat on them, I assume that that's caterpillar, and that yellow is part of their color scheme in the trade bar?
They were not originally yellow. They're, they've been yellow for a while, though, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure they came that way from the factory, though.
Do you know why they changed to yellow?
I believe, um, to show off to potential clients that they are, you know, we're providing the power you need in case of a power failure. I mean, security and continuous power is, uh, you know, the, one of the selling points of, uh, of the, of their business.
Through the Chair, again, it may have been stated at some point, but this is a major data center, and the redundancy of the generators are very important for this type of business.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, overall, I think I'm in agreement with the site plan, um, I have no issue with it, uh, I think it's going to really clean that site up and make things look a lot better and more presentable for the residents and the employees there, uh, I guess this is for Terry, does, do they meet the provisions for the public art requirement?
I believe this total project's under a million dollars.
Under a million? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so that, that doesn't trigger the art requirement.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, one other change I made since the last meeting, which I forgot, was we, I added details of the fencing, which was a request.
To the Chair. Commissioner Culpepper.
Just me, clarification, uh, is, is that masonry wall going in front of that shrubbery or behind? Shrubbery have a front?
The shrubbery will be on the Red River side of the, of the wall.
Red River side?
Yeah, if we, if we go, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
The, the wall is not on the property line, on, for whatever reason, so we, we will build the wall where the wall, existing wall is now, and plant the arborvitae outside the wall.
Okay, commissioners, are we prepared to vote? City Planner, can we?
Yes, thank you, uh, with regard to PSP 19-0004, uh, the site planner view request of Andrew Mosiv, MGA Architects, uh, the planning department does recommend favorable consideration, uh, with the following conditions, uh, subject to approval of PZR 19-0004 to rezone the property to ERO Education Research Office by the city council, final detailed landscape plan must be approved by the city plan, by the planning department prior to the project being reviewed by city council, existing generators along Red River will need to be screened with plant material or by other means, exterior lighting will be shielded, shielded, prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties, petitioners provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material, petitioners execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of any storm water detention system. Petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security, building is to be constructed in accordance with the floor plans and elevations shown on sheets A1 through A3 dated 8/27/19, and are to match the existing office building in color and materials. Approval of the site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage, approval, site, uh, such, separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the building department for any proposed sign, and bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Paragraph 12.
Okay, thank you. Through the Chair. Commissioner Mia?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, PSP 19-0004, uh, favorable, favorable, uh, recommendation of the planning department, that we accept.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion for favorable consideration from Commissioner Mia, seconded by Commissioner Willis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it will move forward, thank you, and good luck to you.
Good luck, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have PZR RUDD 19-0001.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, so this is your next public hearing, uh, PZR RUDD 19-0001, this is a rezoning request, uh, with a residential unit development district of SF Community Renewal Corporation to rezone 4.128 acres of land to residential unit development district, uh, for the construction of 18 townhouse units in the existing McKinley School, and another approximately 28 units in newly constructed buildings in the future phase. Uh, if you recall, um, this particular project was before you a couple of weeks ago, um, the petitioner was, uh, asked to make some revisions based upon, uh, some of the comments that the public did make at that particular meeting, and I think with that, we're going to turn it over to the, uh, petitioner.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Wesley Sims, 607 Shelby, Detroit, Michigan, with SDG Associates Architects and Planners.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission, uh, on behalf of SDG Associates, uh, we're pleased to have the opportunity to be before you again to discuss the McKinley Place Project, um, currently, this architecturally significant building sits vacant, um, and we have studied the site carefully, and based upon the owner's recommendations are proposing to adaptively reuse the school and convert it to 18 higher-end residential units with upper-end appliances, amenities, and two garages for each unit, unit. Uh, we have utilized the 1929 portion of the school as the impetus for all of the design work, uh, which will be presented as a phased project, uh, with the intention to enhance. enhance and complement the existing George Washington neighborhood by invigorating the blighted McKinley School and removing the dilapidated and abandoned external trailer classroom units. With that, I would like to turn it over to John Abella and Ken Bullis to present based upon the study session.
Good evening, John Abella, SDG Associates, six oh seven Shelby, Detroit, Michigan. Thank you for allowing us to present this. During our, during our study session, several items were brought up and we'd like to address those issues now, if we may. The first one was to provide similar adaptive reuse projects and we have a list of those that we can make available to council and to planning. Two are located within the city of Detroit and we looked at also precedent within Holland, Michigan, Atlanta, Georgia, New Jersey, and Massachusetts. And all of these projects are basically taking older schools and/or institutional buildings and adaptively reusing them to try to invigorate the neighborhoods. The second item was to create a phasing plan and what we propose, and you can see it, can you guys go to Slide five A, please?
You have it.
Oh, I have it. Where am I pointing here? So we had originally proposed something that looks like this, which is the full site usage plan. And what we're proposing is a phased project where we have, in Phase One, we will take the existing school and add the eighteen garages to it, also a pavilion structure and a small outbuilding to house lawn mowing equipment, if you will. The portion that says Phase Two, that portion of the site will be raised so that all of the, all of the units have been removed and abated and then the site will be balanced and then seeded. And then Item Three was to provide more, more green space on the, on the site, and these aren't really in any particular order. And as you can see here, we've, we've actually taken out two, two of the townhouse units to add more green space to the site. We've removed quite a bit of additional parking as well to allow for these green spaces, especially along George Washington Avenue. And then Item Four was to show the potential for adaptively, excuse me, to, to make some of the units ADA compliant within the existing school. Because we have two floors and an elevator, fifteen of the eighteen units can actually be made ADA compliant. So I'm going to go to Sheet sixteen. And you can see here that this is our typical floor plan for the, for the school and what we've done is we've highlighted two of the units, and for some reason they didn't print properly. The, both of these units have ADA compliant restrooms and kitchen facilities. And the nice thing about having these levels, having, having the school on two levels and having elevators and having all of the unit being on, being just on one level is that it's very easy to, to make these into ADA compliant units. So if there was a demand, we could actually make fifteen out of the eighteen ADA compliant very easily. I think that covers our top four. I just want to say that we, we took it to heart when we, when we, when we first visited the school and, and said, well, how can we, how can we make the architecture reflect not only the previous time but our, but our current time? And one thing that we proposed to do initially was to take the nineteen fifty-five portion of that that had the flat roof on it and had these kind of large ribbon windows and to remove all that and, and complement that portion of it with, with the same proportion, basically the same sized windows that we had in the nineteen twenty-nine portion of the existing structure. We plan on maintaining the terrazzo floors throughout the, throughout the main public spaces. We plan on reusing any of, of the woodwork that, that we potentially can. I mean, obviously during the demolition and abatement process, some of that is going to be damaged, but, but we hope to reuse much of that. And our, our, our whole thought during this whole process was to adaptively reuse the McKinley School and, and make our newer portion, right, that nineteen fifty-five piece and also the small addition we plan on doing on the end complement and hopefully enhance the neighborhood. And we've also, let's go to the elevations very quickly. You know, we wanted to make this, this appear seamless. We wanted to make this appear seamless, so we, we ended up putting a pitched roof on the, on the portion that happened to be flat prior. Again, that was a nineteen fifty-five piece. And again, as we, as we turn the corner, you can see the addition on the, on the top piece. We wanted to make it hopefully as seamless as possible. And we did the same thing with the, with the eighteen garage units and the, and the pavilion. We planned on making them brick to match the school, and there's a sample of the brick on the, on the materials board. So we plan on using similar shingles. We plan on using similar materials, i.e. brick and limestone, and keeping the proportions of the, of the existing structure. And you can see that throughout, even, even in the townhouse portion, which we're calling Phase Two at this point. We wanted it to be complementary to the school and also the, the neighborhood. And finally, just, and I know you've seen these before, but this was the common room piece with all the existing woodwork refinished. We added a hardwood floor. In its place, we kept all the existing artwork. Obviously, we're going to maintain it and abate the building and then refinish it and hopefully bring it back to its nineteen twenty-nine feel and, and character. And the same thing with the, with the units. It was, it was proposed to use, use high-end, higher-end finishes and appliance, appliances to make, to make these units market rate. Again, still respecting the existing school and its, and its proportions and, of course, the neighborhood. Thank you.
So through the chair, just to remind, this is residential unit development. So you're conceptually approving a master plan for the entire site. However, since they're phasing this, it's only Phase One that you'll be giving site plan approval on. The Phase Two, they don't even have a developer selected. They would have to come back at a, at a subsequent meeting to get approval on Phase Two. So you're conceptually approving the entire site, but you're specifically approving Phase One, which is just the rehab of the existing building and the support structures, accessory structures that are presented in this plan. So try to keep that, keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you would like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I'd like to take this time to open it to the public. Anyone who has any questions or concerns, please step forward and you will have three minutes to speak. Okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I am David Pigford, a resident of George Washington since nineteen eighty-five. I live directly across from the proposed development. As we were beginning our meeting-
If I may, through the chair, can you please give your address?
One eight three zero seven, George Washington.
Thank you.
Okay. As we were beginning our session and saying our pledge of allegiance to the flag, one thing struck me as we were reciting those words. "One nation under God with liberty and justice for all." Well, I'd like to add the words, "and quality of life for all." Now, I have reviewed the R U D D ordinance. I understand its intent. We face many challenges as our urban environments or communities change. And I too am a historic preservationist. I have projects in other states. I believe in adaptive reuse, so I appreciate Mr. Crowe's initiative in bringing this to us. But I must remind this body that every site is not the same and must be addressed according to context and respect those neighbors and individuals who have invested their lives in that, in that context. So as I have spoken with my very close neighbors, some are here today, there have issues, especially with the parallel parking off the street. And there are a number of issues I have questions on. I was not able to attend or participate in the previous planning sessions, but I would like to ask those questions today just to put them on the table. Would that be appropriate? As I look at this plan, I see the parallel parking, which everyone is against in up and down George Washington. There are thirteen mature trees. The smallest caliper is about twelve inches, the largest is about twenty-four inches. They're not in this plan. Are you going to cut down the trees? Has there been a tree survey submitted?
Through the chair, just to give you time, we just take all the questions now and then we'll answer what we can after the public hearing. So you get your full three minutes.
Your time is winding down, so you might-
Okay, traffic capacity, the street is twenty to twenty-two feet wide. It doesn't have the capacity to support this development in Phase Two. The loss of recreational opportunities, there are still children that play there, they're grandchildren now, they're nieces and nephews, great nieces and nephews, that they are there. All neighbors do not want the parallel parking. There are issues in the community, which I know this body is aware of. They, there are serious problems with others using that street to the point where your residents cannot even get in their own driveways. I experience that constantly. Has the fire marshal reviewed this site plan for vehicular access? Is there a snow removal plan submitted? I view the driveways that are planned. I know how that works in terms of snowplanning. They'll just push the snow down those driveways and across the George Washington and block the driveways. There are handicapped individuals who live in those homes. There's a deaf child sign just half a block down and the two houses that are directly across from that central corridor use wheelchairs. I've picked my neighbors up out of the snow and ice, dealing with this.
Okay, I'm sorry, but your time is finished.
Okay, I had about three more.
Make it quick, real quick.
Okay. Does the owner, the developer, plan to advertise these as condos and then rent them later as apartments? One question. Okay. We would recommend additional considerations to this plan by looking at Phase Two reconfiguration because there are ways to improve it and solve these quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Andrea Jones, two four seven four five, Santa Barbara. I am as well a resident of Washington Heights community and am very concerned about this plan. And so I am here to request that you all not grant the rezoning of this area for this site development as been presented to you all today. My concern as a resident of this neighborhood is that I don't think there is a need for forty-eight units in our neighborhood. This particular concern was presented to the City Council and addressed by City Council members. And the comparison was to neighborhoods in Southfield north of Twelve Mile. The desire and the attraction to that part of Southfield is different than the Washington Heights area, south of Ten Mile. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. I am extremely concerned that forty-eight units in our neighborhood is way too many. There is not a need for that many residential units. And therefore, what will happen to units that can't be sold? We, or I, I'll speak for myself, but I have many neighbors here that will agree, we are in favor of redevelopment of this area. And we appreciate the, the adaptation of the school and preserving its history. But forty-eight units in our neighborhood is not warranted. There's not a need for that many units. My second biggest concern is that this plan was not developed in collaboration with the neighbors that will be impacted, not at all. We were presented this plan once at a community meeting and it was not a how can we work together, let's develop a plan that will work for us both. It was this is what we're going to do with this property. We understand it's a, I mean, that it is a privately owned property and technically we may not have a right. We can't force somebody to do something, but as a good steward coming into our neighborhood that is pretty secluded, pretty quiet, and you're bringing in forty-eight units and you don't collaborate with us, you don't talk to us, you don't inquire about our needs, our desires, our concerns, it's not right and you shouldn't vote towards rezoning this.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Tanya Morris and I'm resident at one eight five eight one Capital Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. This is an emotionally charged issue for all of us here today. I took the liberty of writing down the words that I want to share with you. My father always told me that some people may like you, some people may not like you, Tanya, but what they have to do is respect you. You have to come in and sometimes demand respect. And right now, I don't feel as a resident of Washington Heights very respected. This is an issue. There's something fundamentally wrong with this process when the residents don't believe that their leadership will do what is best for them and their neighborhood. I am opposed to this rezoning request because I am opposed to McKinley School project at this time. I feel this project has been moving along with a little too much secrecy. It has been rushed, a little bit sloppy, and non-inclusive of the residents' voices and concerns that we've heard already. Let me tell you why I'm opposed. The McKinley School sits on a corner. There are two streets that run parallel and perpendicular to the school that will be most impacted by this development. To the west is Barbara Fritchie. There are three homes on one side of the street and five on the other, one of which is mine. To the south is George Washington, what a gentleman just spoke of, where there are six homes that are directly across from the school. The plan to just drop forty-six units right in the middle of this corner is absurd and will immediately change the entire landscape of our neighborhood. That could easily be up to a hundred people or more living there. Where will all these people park? There are no sidewalks, so where will they walk in the street? The possibility of increased traffic accidents, increased crime, and decreased property values just will not allow me to support rezoning this land. A few more questions and comments I have. Has a traffic study been completed to determine the effects of the increased density this development would impose on our neighborhood? Has the City Council Site Plan Committee even reviewed the site plan? I was told that they have not, yet it is available for review on the counter in the Planning and Development Department. Where is the project's performer? The math simply does not add up. Our mayor stated that the project would cost approximately twenty million to complete. If you divide that twenty million by forty-six units, the units would have to sell for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars apiece, since houses in our neighborhood don't yet have that high of a price point. One day they might. They would have to become apartment rentals in order to pay back the investors. Finally, where's the data that suggests that all of this new housing is even needed in our community, as Andrea said? Why don't we work on filling the vacant houses and apartments that we already have in our city? Some may suggest that our beautiful city is rapidly becoming one filled with rentals, fast food, and marijuana. Planning Commission members, would you want this type of development in the middle of your neighborhood? This we cannot and will not stand for. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of all Racing Life Matter, P O Box twenty-six seventy-nine, zip code four eight zero three seven.
zip code four eight zero three seven. I've spoke to hundreds of people in our community. We're next on this planning commission. We don't want a overbuilded, overbuilt city. Number one is pop, this property was purchased on corrupt tactics. Two, those eighteen garages, what fool would buy a, 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 an apartment on one side of the street and your parking is on the other side of the street? Other words, they're gonna, they're gonna come back and redo something else with those garages. I've worked for developers all my life and I'll tell you, not one of them can be trusted. Not one. They lie. Once this gets rezoned, once you zone this in their favor, they're gonna do what they want with it. Let me tell you something, I want every resident here, go get yourself a, a map off of your calendar. All of these pink spots are condos, apartments. We got twenty thousand empty units. Twenty thousand empty condos and apartments. We don't need anymore. What we need is new schools. New schools is what build communities, not more people. These guys are gonna build slums and the only thing they're gonna wind up is section eight units. We cannot allow this. Our community is gonna stand with their community and I'm gonna tell you guys something, you're gonna have a bigger problem than just your community. Four acres of land is not a lot of land and what we all need to do is do a, walk over to the site and let's see it for ourselves and let us, let me show you how your mission cannot be complete. It cannot be complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Sandra Alexander and I live at one eight eight zero zero Capital Drive and I have been living in Southfield, Michigan for over twenty-five years. We live in a very quiet sub, not a lot of traffic, and that is one of the reasons why I moved here. Our sub is dark, we have no streetlights or sidewalks, yet this is my home. With your plan, all of that will change. It's a lot for such a small area. They're too close together, not enough green space. From what I understand, the school will stay, not sure what that will look like. I see pictures, I see diagrams, but I'm not sure. Plus the added traffic. When you are building anything, the foundation must be together. Not sure what the line of talking, talking stopped, but we must come together with a plan that you like and the residents of Washington Heights subdivision truly love. As my T-shirt says, "We care," that's why I'm here and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
My name is, uh, Douglas Moore, I live at two four five three five Lee Baker. I just have a few things to say and what, the, the very first thing I have to say and I want everybody to think about it, and like this gentleman said, he's gonna answer your question. How can the mayor with fiduciary responsibilities be the same person that purchased property to turn it over to another developer that sits on, uh, uh, another committee that's on city council to develop this property? I would like the attorney general to answer that question. How can you, as the mayor of, of this city, and you over all the departments, so you got firsthand knowledge of whatever empty land comes available, and you gonna go out and your nonprofit organization is gonna purchase it and then he says, "Nobody's profiting?" My aunt was, uh, worked on a nonprofit organization. She got paid. The presidents get paid, the vice president get paid, the treasurer gets paid, as long as you show that you're putting back out into society. So my next question is, was RFP sent out for other companies to develop on this property for something else? Or was this just a done deal when this four acres was available that the mayor says, "Oh, yeah, that's a good spot that we can put an apartment complex or condo." Do you know what an apartment complex is? It's a transit, it, people. One minute, you might have them there for one year, next, two years, three years. So we gonna constantly have a revolving door of people coming in and in and out of our community. I moved over in this neighborhood ten years ago and it is the quietest neighborhood that you ever wanted to live in. I do not want to have to drive down and see cars racing down the street, loud music, weed smoking, beer bottles and all the rest to come along with condominiums and, 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 and apartment buildings. They don't take the same pride in apartment as we do in our homes. If you ride through i- our neighborhood, you'll see all the grasses are manicured, all of them. And now we gonna sit here and have some developers come along and say, "Oh, yeah, this is a beautiful building, I could put fifteen units and, you know, we can make it, uh, just right." For who? We don't need more people, like, like the lady said. Have y'all went out and investigated how many units that's available throughout the city of Southfield? Are all of them filled to capacity? So you just wanna develop and, 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 and make a newer, uh, complex? For what? S- for the mayor? For the guy that sits on city council? Cause you definitely not doing it for the neighborhood. When did I get a notification that they wanted to develop this in the, in the beginning? I didn't get no notice to say, "Hey, Doug Moore, you need to come down, we thinking about developing in this school." So I suggest to you that you table this, let, let us work through this before we leap out and something goes haywire.
Thank you.
Debra Marshall here from one eight eight nine four Capital Drive and I received no notice of this. If it wasn't for one of my neighbors seeing me out in the lawn last week, it was, coming by and saying, "Hey, you know, you weren't at the meeting." What meeting? And as I look around and see, you definitely don't have the entire Washington Heights area of people here. That's one thing. When I went for applying for car insurance, we were raided off of Detroit because of something that happens on Nine Mile, the Sutton Place Apartments. I went, "Wait a minute, I don't stay off of Nine Mile, I stay off of Ten Mile." And we're not like Sutton Place, so what do you mean? Well, because of the crime for the apartment complexes, our rates of insurance are higher. What's gonna happen when you put this up? How much higher is it gonna go? How much more buildup is it gonna be for us having undesirables in the neighborhood that's causing the rates to go up? We don't want it here. We don't want it here. And it makes no sense to take what's individual housings and try to complex it into multiple housing when we are quiet neighbors. And we're there because we want a quiet neighborhood. We don't need to be splashed and, I'm sorry, I'm totally in agreement. I've worked at places like CBS where all the people come in reeking of marijuana and whatnot. Okay, that's become a common thing now. I don't want it in the neighborhood, I don't want it flashed. And right now it's not flashed, but the traffic is already picking up and the amount of what's gonna happen with a complex like that is just gonna be too much for us. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kiana Linton, I stay at one eight seven two five Capital Drive. Um, now, I would ask for you all to put this, um, redevelopment project on hold for the developers to come up with another concept. I am not opposed to redeveloping the school because the building is just there and it's not doing anything. Um, however, I am opposed to the amount of units that they are gonna put. So I feel that when they finish, start phase one and they redevelop the school, which will be nice, then they're already gonna level it out for phase two. So phase two is already gonna be prepped for you to say, "Okay," for no, for more apartments, townhouses, condos, whatever you wanna call it, to be placed there. Instead of there being a phase one and phase two, I think that everything should be on hold until one plan is developed and this phase two is not existing. Instead, maybe you could put parking there, you could put a park there, something that would help, especially with the flow of traffic. Parallel parking is unacceptable off George Washington. If you put a parking lot there, a park, pause this, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Jackson, two one six eight five Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan. And I am also the association president for Beachwood Acres Homeowners Association and I am here tonight to stand in solidarity with this residential body behind me. Um, it sounds like the developers took great pride in maintaining the integrity of the school, but did little to protect the integrity of the residents' livelihood and quality of life. Coming into any community, the first thing, the most important thing, is always, always its people. To have them overlooked in this manner is not only a great sign of disrespect, but if you move forward with this, it would be a great sign of poor planning. This is not who Southfield should be. One, four acres of land in my community is not but two properties. Two, so to have over forty units in four acres is absurd. Not well thought out, but had it reached out to the residents for input to say, "What would you like here?", they may have known that. What the residents behind me may not know is that there's another community equally as stunning as mine, equally as stunning as theirs, called Lockmore. They stood before the city council in arguing with the developer that came in after development was flipped and the developers start building homes that were not comparable to what was already there. There's nothing that's been said tonight to protect that in the event this property was resumed. I'm not a developer and I've never worked for any, but my stronger half that spoke is, having someone say, "There's four acres of land and I wanna get approved to start phase one and then I'll come back to get approved for phase two." I equate that to me hiring somebody to build my house and they say, "I'm gonna build your living room and then I'll come back next year to do your bathroom." A plan should be well thought out, just like a thesis paper. It should have a beginning, a middle, and an end. So before this goes forward, it is only fair that the developer, number one, presents multiple opportunities of layouts for this community to decide on. And two, it should not be done in phases. They should know exactly what's going to be built right off the bat. Because if you don't and there's nothing in place to stop that, if you rezone, they will be able to build whatever they like. And if there's a recession that all the experts are saying are coming, I guarantee you, they will do whatever they have to do to make their money back. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Smith, I live at one eight six one one Capital Drive in Southfield. My home is right down the street from the school. I understand forty-three people were notified, but the problem is, I walked off, um, I walked off from the school to see how many people would be included, I think it's three hundred feet. Well, two homes was included in three hundred feet that were notified. Now, I don't know what forty-three people were contacted, unless they was at maybe Mr. Allen's, because if you walk off three hundred feet, the most people that could have been contacted in any one, in any direction could have only been, I would say, ten at the most. So who these forty-three people are and where they were located, I, I just can't figure it out, but maybe Mr. Crowe oughta help me. But to say that our problem is not in so much the rezoning, it's in the, it is in the rezoning. The property has already been rezoned. It's been rezoned for residential. So re- rezoning is unnecessary. It's too, the project what they're proposing is so dense, you could see it. It's a cluttered piece of artwork. It is extremely cluttered and it's just not consistent with our neighborhood. And we would like to bypass another zoning because it has been rezoning for residential property and we would just like to keep it consistent in what we have now. As you can notice, many of our neighbors, we're, we're a mature audience, uh, in our community, just like the trees, they're mature. So we're in our prime years, we take care of our property, we put a lot into it, beautiful homes in that area. It's very quiet, as everyone has contested here. We're seeking safety. We're just like the mayor. The mayor said, "Once he does this, he's gone, he's moving to a beautiful gated property." He's seeking safety too, just like us. So we don't want our lives uprooted and changed to bring all the elements that have been described here and just forced on us. We don't think it's fair. And I, I beg of you, please, do not rezone this piece of land. It's four acres. Like she said, it's many homes sitting on half an acre. And now, now you gonna put an additional, what, hundred and fifteen people in that little small area? Uh, that's not fair. I don't think you wouldn't want to bring this to your home and in your area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, um, everything-
Name and address, please, for the record.
Oh, one eight six one Capital Drive, um, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven five, John. I, um, everything has pretty much been said. Um, I just wanna say, um, this development has so many conflicts. Um, the mayor is a part of this development. The codes have to be enforced, he's over the codes. I mean, it's so many things, uh, wrong with this thing and, um, I don't know, I don't know, if I was building a house, um, you know, I'd try to get away from the codes and things, I would probably try to do less to save money. And I just want, um, everyone here to think about it. You know, this, this, I put, we put so much in that community. I, I'm out there doing my lawn, um, I was out there this morning, pulling, spraying weeds and, and keeping my, I try to keep my house up. I try to keep it the way the community is. And I just want all of you all to think about this, really think about, how would you want your community to be? And everybody wants a nice community. And it's just, it's just not thought out, I think it was, it was just in secret, they just was gonna throw it on us. I was out there passing out flyers to the community, nobody knew about this. And Mister, this gentleman, he just called me, he's right across the street from me. He's an architect. He said, "John, man, I don't want my, I, I want something for the community that's good." He does, people don't want this. They just don't want it. And when they put that thing, change that zoning, anything can happen. I just want you guys to think about where you guys live and how you would want to be treated. I think we've been just put down as a, and maybe because all this stuff is happening about this race and stuff, I don't know. It's just nothing is right with this thing. They lie, all these different concepts, lies, they just told us anything. So I just want you guys to think about, how would you wanna be treated? And I think most of the people out here feel the same way I feel.
If I may, through the chair, can you repeat your address, please?
One eight six one one Capital Drive.
One eight six one one.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris McKnight, one eight four seven zero, New Hampshire Drive. I'll be really brief. I'll be really brief. My brother lives on Addison, second house from these garages. Ms. Parker back here stays right next door to him. To come out of your house and see these garages here, it's not a good look. As far as this Phase Two concern, I'm really curious on how much of a high-end place you can put up looking at the back of Family Dollar and ABC Warehouse. It don't make a lot of sense to me. The two garages here, I can see if maybe you plan on tearing this thing down and put something real sexy up, but as I told my constituency, there's absolutely nothing sexy about this. And I think it's trash. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Allen. I'm at 18516 Addison, and I also live across the street. We have a very beautiful neighborhood. Everybody takes care of their lawns. It's quiet. However, now that with construction, some of the streets are closed, we get a lot more traffic. So if we get a lot more traffic right now because of the construction, what is going to happen when they add apartments with, when you have so many apartments, you have their visitors all in this quiet neighborhood? I'm saddened because they didn't even include us in the planning. We got, we got information saying, "Well, this is what it's going to be. Yeah, I want to come and see what it's going to look like." I just feel as though the neighbors, we pay taxes, that we should have been included with the planning. Yes, should something be there? Absolutely. But not apartments or townhouses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lanell Wilson-Boone. My address is 18558 Addison Drive. And I just want to say, I stay directly across from this. I have a one-year-old. I've moved as far as in Southfield, for as far as the safety. It's a quiet block. I just don't want, as far as something to change this, my family. Just put yourself in my situation. I understand, again, like they said, something has to be done with it instead of it sitting there, but forty-eight units, don't do this to my family. I ask that you really consider this, and if we can, maybe the community come together and go out there and petition and get as far as signatures, you let us know how many, how many you need for this not to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Morris, 18581 Capital. I just asked the Planning Commission, would you want this in your neighborhood? As a Southfield resident, would you want this handled in the way that this process has been handled with our neighborhood? Would you be in favor of this? Would you vote, yes, come and put apartments and townhomes in our neighborhood? I'd ask, where else in Southfield has this been done? In the other meeting that I attended, there was a lot of talk about what's happened on Twelve Mile and Southfield Road. That's not the same as our Washington Heights neighborhood. That's more of a commercial area. And if this property is already zoned for residential, which I heard that it was, but it's only zoned for single-family residential, then why not put up a single-family home that, that is comparable to what we have there already? And going forward, since the city is doing a lot of different projects, and in some of the cases, it, it affects neighborhoods, can the neighbors be involved upfront more? I don't know if that means that you have to change the rules as far as what the notification is, because at the last time I spoke, I was told it was three hundred and fifty feet, and we went back and walked three hundred and fifty feet, and that was two houses in our neighborhood. We lived down the street, we didn't even get any notification on this. I just don't think it's been handled fair. I think it's poor to the residents of Southfield to have something forced on them, and I think that as a Planning Commission, you should be able to see through fancy words such as high-end appliances and market rate condominiums. As a resident of the Washington Heights, no one, I don't think anyone has come up here tonight in favor of this. No one has been in favor of this in our area, and I bet that you couldn't find more people that would be in favor of it than those that are against it. The last thing I'd say is that I don't want this proposal tabled. I want it canceled. I don't want to come back up here and hear the same stories. I don't want to come back up here and hear them present another plan-
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
-about eighteen units, ten units, no units. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dorothy Weeks. I live at 18191 New Hampshire. Looking at your proposal, you have forty-six units. Multiply that by two, that's, what, about ninety-two cars? You know, we don't have that many cars in our neighborhood already. And you're bringing ninety-two. Right now, like they've already mentioned, the construction has brought a lot more traffic to our area. You add these ninety-two cars, and we will not be able to, our neighborhood will not be safe. We can't have children out with all these cars ripping and running through our neighborhood. We've even, we know that we need something to, something in that space, but what you've proposed, we don't go along with at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Royal. I live at 18550 George Washington. I am definitely opposed to rezoning from the current zoning classification to a residential unit district. I believe that this would result in substantial, a substantial amount of traffic, which could, could actually be over one hundred cars. And I think that our neighborhood is a quiet, kind of sleepy hollow neighborhood, and I have this horrible vision of ninety-two cars, or even half that amount, pulling off of the Lodge Freeway at the Evergreen Ten Mile Exit, making a right turn on Lee Baker, going four tenths of a mile up to George Washington, and turning left right in front of my house. I do not want that. I think that would be horrible, because people will finally realize, realize that all they have to do is go up, go up the Lodge Freeway and not get off at Southfield Road, but pull onto Lee Baker and avoid those two lights on Southfield Road, and they're going to pull right in to this quiet little neighborhood with all those cars. Second, the multi-residential unit is not aesthetically compatible with our neighborhood. We have beautiful, single-family homes, and what you're talking about is a lack of compatibility and scale with the homes in our neighborhood. And I think that if you were to rezone it, our neighborhood, or that particular area, that that will result in a substantial decrease in the desirability of our little sleepy hollow neighborhood. And I am asking you, please do not do this. Please, don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? See?
My name is Karen Ledford. I live at 18756 Capital Drive. I think that we are being disrespected. I'm looking at this plan, and I looked at it up at the Planning Department. Those garages, one of those garages is only about two feet from the proposed sidewalk that goes around there. My question is, why would you think that somebody wants to walk along the sidewalk and see a bunch of brick buildings facing them? Why do you think someone coming down Continental wants to see that? I also noticed that you only have about fifteen parking spaces displayed. I understand that there are garages for everyone, but fifteen spaces for visitors? So what you mean to do is, George Washington has the spaces, parallel parking, which we don't need, so rest of them are going to park all around, along the west side of that property, along that street in our neighborhoods. I noticed on this development plan that you have run, there are a few things that you say in this, that this project or this zoning is supposed to have. Foster green infrastructure, preserving natural resources. The buildings themselves only cover maybe about twenty-five to thirty percent itself, but the rest of it is concrete, roads, driveways, sidewalks. We do have a little greenery there, but not a lot. It also says in here something about the economic impact. The proposed development shall not result in an unreasonable negative economic impact on surrounding areas. That says it all right there. Because you can't tell me that you can put apartment buildings, condos, or whatever you want to call them, in a single residential detached neighborhood and not bring down the value of those homes. The people on George Washington, another thing the developers did, I'm skipping around, but they, they didn't show the community. They showed a picture of the roads looking east, the roads looking west, but you did not show the, the houses that surround that property. It's, it's just an, it's just an invasion to even think that something like that should happen. The, the, the concrete, that's enough to take everything away. And for them to come here thinking that that's enough parking spaces, and those garages aren't going to make a difference, and we're not going to see that, we don't want to have to go through every little piece of this development to pick out what the developers already know is not a good idea. Handicap parking, what, two, three spaces?
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I'll be back.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Good evening. I'll be brief, too. My name is Devon Owens. I live at 18725 Capital Drive, and everybody has pretty much said everything. This has brought our community closer and the surrounding communities for us to have a voice as to what we want to have where we live. And I know that from different hearings, that you ladies and gentlemen are very particular about how something is going to make the area look. And to have this directly in the middle of our subdivision is not going to make it look appealing for anybody in the city of Southfield. So I am asking that it not be rezoned. We were never told, we were never asked what we wanted. We were told what was going to happen, and we're the ones that live here, we pay mortgages here, we pay taxes here, we keep up our houses here. And how are you going to bring new people into Southfield when there aren't even any schools? So redevelop the school, bring families back, because we don't have that in Southfield anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Seeing now that we declared a public hearing closed, I would like the petitioner to step back forward to the microphone, please.
Through the chair, before, before we have the petitioner respond to questions, I, I do want to respond to the public notice-
Okay.
-and also state to the residents that that's why we hold these public hearings. This is a public hearing to hear from the residents, and this is the first, the first time that the commission is reviewing this from the study session. So the public hearing that's been advertised and noticed is to give you an opportunity to speak to us, the staff, and the Planning Commission, so we can take your, your comments to heart. I, I'm going to read the addresses that were notified, were required by state law to notify everyone within three hundred feet of the property, and that's homeowners. The city has a policy of going beyond that to three hundred and fifty feet. In addition to the specific notices that get sent out to property owners, we advertise through the Southfield Sun, which is the designated paper, so legal notices in that paper. We have notices on the city's website, and we post on the board. So we want to encourage as much public input as possible. The properties that were specifically notified within three hundred and fifty feet is 18481 West Ten Mile, 18302, 18302 New Hampshire Drive, 18451 George Washington Drive, 18439 George Washington Drive, 18311 West Ten Mile Road, 18554 Capital Drive, 18245 George Washington Drive, 18470 New Hampshire Drive, 18349 George Washington Drive, 18307 George Washington Drive, 18507 George Washington Drive, 18250 New Hampshire Drive, 18420 New Hampshire Drive, 26500 Grashit, 18501 West Ten Mile Road, 18470 George Washington, 18171 George Washington, 16800 Biltmore Street, Detroit, 18275 George Washington, 18203 George Washington, 3467 Sutton Place, Bloomfield Hills, 18216 New Hampshire Drive, 18590 Addison Drive, 18272 New Hampshire Drive, 18558 Addison Drive, 18516 Addison Drive, 18440 George Washington Drive, 26277 Castillon Drive, 18411 George Washington Drive, 18184 New Hampshire Drive, 18531 Capital Drive, 18360 New Hampshire Drive, 24655 Southfield Road, Suite 101, P.O. Box 20280, 1317 West Boulevard, Berkeley, 18570 Capital Drive, 18510 George Washington Drive, 19785 West 12 Mile Road, Suite 404, 320 Martin Street, Suite 100 Birmingham, 18474 Addison Drive, 18324 New Hampshire Drive, 18219 George Washington Drive, 18551 Capital Drive. Those properties that are outside the neighborhood are listed as property owners of record, and that's why they're notified. We also send a notice to the Washington Heights Civic Association, based on what community relations keeps accurate records, so it's only as good as those records are kept. Those are the specific notices that are sent out in advance, in addition to the public notices that were required to do by state law. And I just wanted to address that right off the bat.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Okay. Can I have the petitioner, please, step forward? Okay, well, you heard some of the questions and concerns.
Yes.
Hopefully, you can address some of those concerns.
We will do our best, sir.
Yeah.
First of all, just a point of clarification, we are not developers-
First of all, just a point of clarification, we are not developers. We are architects, designers, and civil engineers who work for a client. Just want to clarify that. And in our, in our proposal, in the, in the master plan that we created, we never intended on disrespecting anyone. And it's, it's through not only our investigation of the site, but of the neighborhood and talking with the client that we came up with the scheme that, that we did. Now, I just want to make that clear that, you know, to our, to the best of our ability, this is the scheme that we came up with. This was the master plan that we came up with, based on owner criteria and based on our own predilections and how we view architecture and urban design and adaptive reuse. And another point of clarification is that the total units are forty-four units. And parking, while it's not required for parking to be on George Washington, again, we put that, we actually have more parking than is, than is required by the ordinance. So I understand the, or we understand the objections to that. But again, we just wanted to see how, how we could best develop the site and make it compatible not only with the residential component, but this is also serving as a hybrid and a, and a, and a bridge to the rest of the, of the community, specifically Southfield and, and Ten Mile. We did put sidewalks on our, on our site. We want to make it a walkable community. We understand that the sidewalk ends pretty close off of, off of George Washington Avenue and there's very little sidewalks. We wanted to promote walkability and quote unquote urbanism or a, or a new urbanism. Regarding, regarding the fact that people keep mentioning apartments, these are not apartments, they're condominiums. People will purchase these. You know, the reason that we decided to conceive the master plan as a whole and then, and then come back and, and phase it as we have was based on our study session, based on the interaction that we had with, with the members of the planning board, or planning commission that were there. So again, and we're also keeping in mind that, you know, this, this does, this does bridge a quote unquote bedroom community and, and, and we respect that. We used the existing school as, as our precedent. And, you know, regarding the R4 versus the RUDD, again, we are, we are applying for the RUDD primarily for the fact that we have an existing structure that we don't want to mothball, that we don't want to see go to waste, that we don't want to see be, be in a, in a landfill. A lot of time and effort and frankly, money's going to be put into that building to make it beautiful. I'm going to pass it over to my colleagues now. Nothing to add? Do you want to talk about traffic?
We can talk about it.
Okay.
My name's Ken Bullis of Spalding Decker, 905 Southeast Boulevard in Rochester Hills. In regards to the traffic, we have reached out to the city to ask for background information, which is not available at this time. But there was a statement made earlier in regards to forty-four units. There will be a traffic impact because the property is vacant right now. So there will be more traffic coming down through. I don't know that it's to the impact that was stated earlier. You're probably going to see trips going out, probably about forty units in the morning, and then maybe as many as sixty units coming back in in the evening. So as you can look around your neighborhood as well, it could be a little bit more than that based on a study that we would need to do sometime in the future. But right now, we don't, we're not prepared to answer all those questions. But certainly forty-four units will bring some additional traffic because this property is vacant at this point.
Excuse me. How about as far as snow removal? They had a concern about snow being pushed into the driveways. Is that a concern or what plan do you have for that?
We have, we have spitballed the idea. No one's come up with a snow removal plan, but typically on a, on a, on a development such as this, we, we anticipated basically pushing the snow out in front of the school on the, on that, on that green space. I mean, that was the first notion that we had. We weren't going to put it in the street. We're not going to put it in front of someone's driveway and/or someone's residence.
Okay, and how about as far as the trees?
We have a tree survey that is underway. It is not completed at, at this time. A lot of the quote unquote historical trees are eight inches in large, correct? Eight inch in caliber larger, so those would remain. We also need to have an arborist come out and, and see which trees are going to survive frankly and which trees are in good condition. So what you're looking at is a, is a, is a proposed landscape scheme. We would intend, just like we're going to maintain the school and, and, and keep that school, we would anticipate maintaining those trees as well.
Okay. And I'm glad you clarified that these will be condos, not apartments, not Section Eight, but condo, high-priced condos.
Yes, sir.
For sale, not rent.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, questions, concerns?
To the chair.
To the chair.
Okay. Mr. Cole Pepper.
Let me say this. Thank you. I know it's emotional and you have a right to be because this is your neighborhood. Saying that, you know, we have schools that's something. As some of you have said, something has to be done to that area. The key is, you want no minimum impact to your neighborhood, which is understandable. I, I got a question for you when you first, and I might take a few minutes. When you first stated, you said that you had two neighborhoods that you had previously done this to schools.
I said that we, we have, we have a list.
You gave two.
We have a list of projects that are, that are similar to, for, for adaptive reuse of, of, of schools.
My question behind that is, hearing what we've hearing is that, the stigma I have is that no communication. Realize we just saw this last week like they saw it. And I asked a question earlier. I think a lot of this emotions and could help a lot if the resident had a seat at the table.
Can you explain what you mean by that?
Meaning that they needed and wanted some type of input when they found out that something of this nature was going to be built in their neighborhood in the school, realizing we saw it for the first time last week. And I mentioned to Mr. Crowe, well, not to Mr. Crowe, to Jeff earlier, did, and I know you're not developers, you're just architects and maybe we need to develop in here, did anybody reach out to the neighborhood? Because one thing we do, we do, any petitioner, any developer contractor come before us and they do anything within the neighborhood or the butts up to the neighborhood, our first thing is, did you talk to the neighbors? And what, what I'm hearing is, and maybe it's because of timing or whatever, that the neighbors just got this dumped on them like we did. And I think they have a right to be upset because they wanted a voice. And I've heard one comment say, which I guess Terry may correct me on this, is counsel this. We can't counsel it because it's on the record. And I think Mr. Morrison knows that we can't counsel it. Something has to be done, whether we postpone or what do we do? We got to do something. But my main concern is, we need to do something with that school. The question is, what do we do with it? And we need input and we should get input from the residents. Because whatever goes there, if the residents does not have a say in what goes there, it would not be successful. Okay? I mean, no, 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 let's, let's keep it professional. I, I'm, I'm all for it. We need and we will do something with the schools. But my problem is, if you don't do something, I think Ms., Ms. Owens put it very nicely. Something has to be done and they want input on what goes there. And a lot of people said it. They know something's going to be done with their school. They know that. Okay? But they have a right to want to know upfront what goes and have some input. And that's my number. And I have a suggestion after the rest of them talk, but they weren't involved and that's why we're where we are. Because they had no say. If they'd have been involved upfront, I think a lot of these questions would be easier to take and a little less emotional. Thank you, Chair.
Through the chair. And I want to give all the commissioners an opportunity to speak, ask questions, make comments. But one of our directives was to hold some type of town meeting or a meeting on the site. That's still being worked on. And I don't want to preempt anybody here, but we did request some input on traffic impacts. There's still, they still mentioned tree surveys. I think they did try to respond to some of the questions that came up at the study session. But there's still a number of items that haven't been satisfied for you guys to be making a decision tonight on. And I, and, you know, that's why we have these public hearings. And our practice has been, when there's still too many unanswered questions, we direct the developer and the architect to meet with, with the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And as long as they're fair and reasonable and we can try to find some type of middle ground, then we move forward. And, and so that's going to be my recommendation that we postpone to a date certain.
Absolutely.
To give opportunity to hold that town hall meeting, to prepare the traffic, you know, traffic impact, to finalize the tree survey, to have an opportunity for the commission, staff, and neighborhoods to visit some of these other schools. These were all open-ended questions from the study session. Now, that being said, I don't want to, I don't want to dissuade additional comments and questions to be made tonight. But since you brought it up first.
Yes.
That's my position.
That's mine.
My recommendation to you to consider. So if, if you keep that in mind, try to focus the questions on what they proposed, what the revisions are, and any other questions that haven't been answered tonight.
Commissioner Martin?
I've heard a lot of talk about the traffic. Do you have any idea of how many teachers and faculty were at the school when the school was open? Because if you have...
We don't have that data, sir.
And that is something that I think we need to get, not only with McKinley. Sorry. My initial question was how many teachers and staff were at McKinley School before it closed? To see how many cars were coming in and out on a daily basis. The other thing is that if we have to look at McKinley School, we need to know for all the vacant schools, how many staff members are there so that we can have an idea of what amount of traffic was coming in in the morning and going out in the evening so we have apples and apples to compare to what the residents are talking about.
And through the chair, that's exactly how I framed it. What was the existing traffic pattern when it was a school? What would the traffic pattern be if this is developed as a single family? And what is the traffic pattern with the proposed residential multiple family? And there are standards for all those things. And, and so that's, that's part of what we requested them to be able to address. And I don't think they're prepared to answer that tonight.
Commissioner Willis?
Thank you, through the chair. Because of Mr. Crowe's question and Commissioner Martin's, I too, I think I'm dissuaded to go further today. I think there needs to be a lot of conversation. I think this neighborhood needs to sit down and talk with you. I think there's more things than we can cover in any kind of a formal session. So I'm reluctant to, to ask questions like, I want to know what's going on with the green space. I want to make sure that the adaptive use is appropriate for the potential purchaser. And so I just see those as items that need to be worked out. And so rather than getting into all of them, I would like to see the neighborhood and you have that conversation. And then we could bring it back to a formal session and see where we go with it.
However, through the chair to Mr. Willis. Those are all valid points, but it would be good in an open session to ask the questions so they can be prepared to come with responses.
Understood.
And I, I did also ask, and I know the civil engineer can address some of the green infrastructure because he, he talked about that during the study session. I also asked for a net increase or decrease for green space, which you may or may not be able to answer tonight. But since our proposal is probably to table it, I'd like all these questions to be on the table so that they can be prepared to respond to them the next time we get together.
Understood.
So if you have any additional questions that are germane to the site plan or the rezoning, I would suggest at least asking them now and then they can refrain from answering until they're better prepared.
I will use that time now. And, and again, one is, we are looking at units that are seven hundred and sixty-three to twelve hundred and sixteen square feet. But I see nothing that looks at use for children. I don't know if there's a space for children's recreation. I saw the common room. It looks like a great place that I would enjoy with books, but I think a twelve-year-old would go nuts in that room. I'd like to see what you would anticipate as your prospective purchaser and see how those needs are addressed. I see very small green space. I don't know if that's sufficient. I think it depends on who that purchaser is. And so I'd like to, I'd like to know what you anticipate doing with the green space. I, I heard a number and I'm not sure if this is one to address at this moment, but at twenty million dollars, someone suggested that each unit would cost in excess of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. At that price, I don't understand the feasibility of the project at all. I'd like to understand what size and what price and are we looking at marketing it into a, into the city of Southfield? I think that's, I think those are the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dettson.
Thank you. A lot of residents agree that this is what, it's, it was a poor process. I have been planning in, in several areas in the, in the country. And usually, most definitely, they, especially a size like this, basically they want to have input with the residents. And so, and I'm not blaming you, I'm blaming your, your clients. And every, every community or every neighborhood is different. And whatever, what's happened north of Twelve Mile, maybe not suitable, suitable for Ten or Eleven Mile or Nine Mile for that, that case. But I hope that this, if this does not happen, I hope that the client will pursue something instead of just letting it go. If this does not happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
I've got a lot of thoughts on this. I have a lot of thoughts on this because I drive past this building ten times a day between my home and my office and I think of what I would design here. And so I'm going to jump around a little bit here. This is a great adaptive reuse project. It's above and beyond. This is like, what would I do? This is what I would do if I could do it. Forty-four units is a small apartment development in the broad scheme of the world. It's, it's not dense. Other reason I say this, I live in this neighborhood across, I live just north of here. There's a school across from me. There's got to be, the parking lot probably holds sixty to eighty cars. There's probably a hundred and twenty cars there every day. I don't see any buses ever. I don't understand. I'm sure it wasn't designed for the traffic that's generated by today's schools. But one of the things I've noticed on this planning commission is there's a huge anti-school sentiment. And now this is an anti-anti-school sentiment. So the school was busy and it was, it was probably a problem for the neighborhood. The school's been closed down for, I'm not sure how long. Now there's no traffic. There's going to be less traffic than there ever was when there was a school. This is just based on me looking out my window or waiting to get out of my own driveway for the people in the school. One of the strangest things to me is how much marijuana you smell from people dropping their kids off at school. That's weird. But there was a smelling marijuana comment that doesn't have anything to do with this development. And I, I smell marijuana at the school across the road from my house. So if we stop, if we stop a school, should we shut down all schools? So if we stop, if we stop a school, should we shut down all schools and shut down all marijuana? That's not related to this development. There's a lot of things that aren't.
Please don't interrupt.
Yeah, I know, I'm getting ready to leave.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to have a comment.
Okay.
Because I'm grown.
So, okay, so...
And the parking complex ain't nothing but somebody rotating in and out.
Okay, sir. That's enough. That's enough.
I think it's been, it's been established that this is not an apartment complex. It's a, it's a 44-unit housing development for sale for a high price, which I think is a good thing. I own real estate in Southfield. I hope things sell, sell for more money than they currently do. It's a great neighborhood. There's a lot of great, unique houses in there. No one's, no one's debating that. This is also Southfield Road and 10 Mile Road. These are very busy areas. This is going to be busy no matter what. As you get into the middle of this neighborhood, it's very calm and beautiful and nice. There's still nice houses on the north end of the neighborhood. This is going to screen them, I think, from the busy traffic on Southfield Road and 10 Mile. Obviously, 10 Mile Road's under construction right now. There's additional traffic. It, it makes my life difficult. That's, that's fair to say, a lot of people. But I think the ability to save this, this significant building is great. The ability to let 20 people live in this building at, in, for a good price, I, I think that's good. It's going to bring a lot of, it takes a certain person, a certain caliber to be able to afford this project. So I think that's a positive thing. So I'm just looking at this architecturally and from a planning point of view, and I think it's spot on. A lot of things, I mean, maybe it can be a little more green space. I'm not sure about the community involvement in the meeting process. It sounds like there was not enough time to discuss it, that there should be more discussion. But as a, as a school project, and like I said, I look at this thing every day, every day, and think about it. Now, there's other schools deep, deep in the heart of neighborhoods that you have to drive a long ways off a major road. You're on a major road in this thing, and a couple hundred feet, two major roads. So I think this is a, this is a transitional, it needs to be a transitional project between retail, which there already is on 10 Mile and Southfield Road, and a great, solid residential neighborhood. I think it's going only enhance it in the future, truthfully, in my opinion. Yeah, I think that the, I, I just think that the school must have been so much more intense than, you know, a house that, you know, several people grouped together in houses would ever be. One thing I am questioning is, there is no longer a driveway to the north closer to 10 Mile. It looks like there's a lot of garages in that area, and that used to be where the, the access was. I don't know if that's a factor of just the amount of garages required or just the lack of land with the adjacent commercial property. That's one thing I would be interested in. I understand the reality of needing to phase a construction project. That's, I don't think that's a bad thing. And I guess the good part is, if Phase Two never happens, it stays grass, so you get the park by default, and you get those ugly temporary buildings out of there, which are a big eyesore right now. I, I think it's, I think it's an awesome project, and it's close to my neighborhood, so I guess I'd be, I'd be happy to have it. I'd be happy to have it at the school across from my house because it would save so much traffic and aggregate aggravation for me, and I think in the long run, make my neighborhood better. So what would I do if this was in my front yard? Same thing I'm saying right now. I think it's, I think it's great. I think you did a great job on it. I think that's all.
Thank you. Martin. Commissioner Martin?
I believe right now on the east end of the, the property and on the north end, there's a wall, am I correct, solid wall? Do you plan on leaving that there? I know they were stuck about looking at the garages and stuff, and if there's a wall there, they kind of...
First of all, the, the units typically are, are parallel to the, to the east side wall, and the wall that's on the, on the, on the north side, there's a partial wall, then it becomes more like a fenced area. We plan on landscaping those areas, make them green and lush, we hope.
The, the screening?
Yes. Terry, I'm sorry, I don't know which, I should, through the, through the chair, I don't know which questions I should answer or which ones I should hold out.
Well, anybody up here, you answer their questions. And then we want to make sure that any legitimate questions ever raised by the public get answered.
Yes.
But you answer through the chair.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
The, I'm sorry. Along the west side of the building, the school property, where the school is now, I believe there was a driveway that came out to the side street, Continental, I believe it is. That's, will that still exist?
So I can point with this. There is, so we have access obviously from, from, from George Washington. We have adjacent here, and there's also one access point here. We, we originally had three access points, access points for these garages, and based on our discussions with planning early on, we went with one access point through the, through the, through the center here. So this is really going to be like a one-way drive, so most people are going to come in, park in their units in that direction. Does that answer your question?
I missed the first part of what you said. I was looking at the map, it was a much smaller...
Sir, so we have an access point here. We have a one-way access point here, and this is the only access point along Continental. So these are, there's a, there's a sidewalk and some, and some green space here. So when you, when you come out of these, you'll either come this way, well, you, you will come this way to exit, exit the site. Same thing here.
And that's all with the landscape?
Correct.
The screening?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mia?
Thank you. Through the chair. I understand no one likes change. Change is inevitable, but I think it was quite evident here that the neighbors didn't know what was going on, weren't aware of what was going on, and it was just imposed on them. And they should have a seat at the table in order to come up with some solution, something desirable for them. School, I don't think would be, I don't think there's going to ever be a school there anytime soon because I, I doubt, I don't know how many children are in that, in that neighborhood right now. I don't think too many people have children anymore. I think that's why some of the schools are closed, that's why the schools are closed now, because there are not enough children for the school. The project looks nice, but I think you do need to go and talk to the residents to get some kind of consensus on what to put in their neighborhood, since they are the ones who live there. But I know change is inevitable.
Thank you. To the chair.
Commissioner Culpepper? I recommend postponement, rescheduling, whatever adjective we want to use for PZRRUDD19-0001 based on the information tonight that needs to get back and better communication be done. I know for a fact we cannot cancel this legally, but I think we need to reschedule this at the direction of the planning, but this need to be rescheduled, not decided on tonight, in my opinion.
And through the chair, and I'll, I'll ask this because we can, we should postpone to a date certain.
Right.
And the question is...
What date?
September, I believe, 25th is our next regular meeting. Do you guys feel that you could have your town hall neighborhood meeting prior to then? Or would you like a two-month postponement? But we'd like to do a date certain so the public knows that it's going to come back at a certain time. In the meantime, I want to make sure that we're clear that we have directed them to have at least one neighborhood meeting, preferably at the school, if it's safe, that they owe us some type of traffic impact comparison, that the tree survey gets completed, and that you have a list of other schools. I think those were the four outstanding issues, that they're prepared to answer all those bigger issues with regards to the smaller ones. And again, I just want to remind that we are only basically focusing on a Phase One, which is 18 units of the existing school. With the Phase Two just being green space, and that they would be required, I, I know someone was concerned about, well, they can just do what they want. No. Because of this residential unit development, they would be required to come back before Planning Commission and City Council for Phase Two.
Right.
But at the same time, we want to see how potentially Phase Two would work out so that the roads, the circulation, the green space are thought through for, with regards to what Phase One is ultimately going to look like. But that being said, I, I do think that they've, they, they did try to respond to some of the legitimate concerns that were raised at our study session. I just don't think there was enough time to get the neighborhood meeting together. But this was previously scheduled for the public hearing, and we wanted to hear comments from the public. We wanted to give the Planning Commission opportunity to ask questions and for them to answer what they could. But I think there was also a legitimate question about economic impact. Now, we don't typically look at economic impact just with site plan, but because this is part of the residential unit development, maybe you could be better prepared to answer the economic question at our next meeting. So I'm, I'm, I just am going to ask the architects on behalf of the, the developer owner, would you like one month or two months postponement?
We would request a two-month.
Okay. So then our regular meeting on, in October?
Yes.
Jeff?
I think it's 30th, it doesn't show on here. So I would just say, if I may through the chair, I think I would make a recommendation that we postpone to the October regular meeting date. It, I think it's the 30th, but I don't have a calendar here with me.
Okay. Before we do that... Okay, Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. I know that we talked about join, um, joining the city council because I, I thought that they had the same concerns, and so is it a separate meeting or a, two separate meetings?
Well, I, I think if it, just logistically, if it could be combined and we could satisfy both the council's concern regarding the brownfield and our concern about getting input for the neighborhood, it could be at the same meeting. Again, irrespective of what the council acted on or didn't act on with the brownfield, our charge is the rezoning and the site plan.
Correct.
And so that is a question that we raised before that's consistent with what we've done in other developments where neighborhoods, you know, have concerns. And according to my calendar, I believe it's October 23rd is our Planning Commission regular meeting for October. So if you're going to postpone, I would postpone to a date certain of October 23rd.
Okay. Um, I just have a question. Did city council schedule their meetings with the neighborhood?
I'm, I'm not aware, I don't, I'm not aware that they have yet.
To the chair. We have a council member in the audience that's raising her hand. Maybe she can answer the question.
I should have spoken with the mayor, and he did have a tentative meeting for a meeting at the school for next week, September 5th, but I believe he's out of town now, so that is not part of it. But tentative meeting, September 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say one more thing, too. This is also my neighborhood. This is where I live. And every time I pass by the school, I'm wishing something gets done with it because to me, that's what's bringing down property value, passing by the Baptist League School and looking at trailers and what have you. So that's, to me, I would really like to see something done. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to pick and choose whatever project that we want to happen at. I wish we could, but we don't have that power or authority to do that. But the biggest problem here, of course, everybody can see, is communication. Just listening to the audience and what you're saying, and, and a lot of stuff was not really true or is not really happening in that way. So I think a good conversation and a little more time, I mean, this could be a possibility. But right now, there was a lot of unanswered questions, and we will get to the bottom of it. I do have a motion.
To the chair.
Commissioner Culpepper.
I recommend PZRRUDD19-001 be postponed to date certain, October 23rd, 2019.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll be postponed to a date certain. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Contact information for Mr. Sims.
Yes, it's interesting, she used to put like, when you know it's there.
Yes. [laughing].
Evening, adjourned? Evening, adjourned?
No. I guess so. Now, we have a few more things to discuss. Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to recommend, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes of July 10th, July 24th, and July 30th.
Support?
Okay, we have a motion for approval for the minutes, supported by Commissioner Willis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the minutes will go as stand. Public comment?
Yeah, if I may, I'm going to go grab the chart from, at the back of the building, so just give me a second.
All righty.
Halloween is 31st. That's what, that's what my fault. But see, and I know it from a point of authority, my birthday is Halloween. My wife's birthday is...
All right, if I may through the chair, there's approximately maybe 12 or 13 names on this list. I'll call them out one at a time, so you'll have another opportunity, three minutes for comment. Stacy Jackson.
She left. Probably done.
Sandra Alexander. Deborah Marshall.
She's gone.
Andrea Jones.
Andrea Jones, 24745, Santa Barbara. I want to know, during this time, can I ask questions about what I heard during this meeting for clarification? Or is this only comment?
Yes, if I may through the chair, it's any item on the agenda or not.
Okay. You can ask it. We may be on the answer, may not, but you can ask it.
Okay. Commissioner Culpepper mentioned a couple of times that the request for rezoning for the Rudd, you know, what we were just talking about for Washington Heights, cannot be canceled. So I want to know what our options are as a resident. And I know you said it's on the books, it's legal, so what are our options? Because once they meet with us once, right, and it's going to be, again, here's what we're going to do, and, and I'm sure they will oblige us, they will answer our questions, but you have only required them to have a meeting with us. That's it. And so once they feel that requirement from a technical standpoint of setting a meeting, us coming together, them giving time for us to ask questions, and them to provide answers, then what, what recourse do we have or what power do we have as residents? Because that one meeting is not going to get us to a place of an agreement. So when you say this can't be canceled, what does that specifically mean? And is there still an opportunity for you all as a planning commission to not... So, what are our options? Because once they meet with us once, right? And it's going to be again, here's what we're going to do and, and I'm sure they will oblige us, they will answer our questions. But you have only required them to have a meeting with us, that's it. And so, once they feel that requirement from a technical standpoint of setting a meeting, us coming together, them giving time for us to ask questions and them to provide answers, then what, what recourse do we have or what, um, power do we have as residents? Because that one meeting is not going to get us to a place of an agreement. So, when you say this can't be canceled, what does that specifically mean? And is there still an opportunity for you all as a planning commission to not, not make the recommendation to city council to rezone?
Yes, yes, there's still.
Let me.
You want to answer that, Commissioner Culpepper?
Okay. What I meant by that, Mr. Morris, if I remember correctly, uh, his comment was to cancel. The meeting is what I thought he was talking about, cancel the meeting. He didn't say, "Don't approve the zoning."
Okay.
His comment was, "You need to cancel, this should be canceled."
Okay.
And what my statement was, we couldn't cancel it because it was already in process.
Okay.
Rezoning is we vote favorable, unfavorable on it, the zoning, and it goes to the city council and they approve it. Or not, approve it or not. Okay, my comment wasn't that the rezoning to be canceled. My comment was legally, we cannot cancel this meeting. That was his statement.
Okay.
Okay, the meeting, not the rezoning request.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, okay, I apologize. I was just addressing his individual because it's legal, you can't cancel it when it's already in process.
When they oblige us with one meeting. Then what?
Okay, well, hopefully.
Because you know we'll be back up here, right?
Right, right. Hopefully in that one meeting, any questions that you have will be answered. Any problems could be solved at that point possibly.
But we're not asking for answers, we asking for change, for something different. It don't, I mean.
But there, there has to be a reason for us not to allow.
Okay.
The project to go forward.
Okay.
Has to be a valid reason for it. We just can't say, "I don't want it."
Right, I understand.
So, if we have a valid reason, we can deny it.
We'll search for that valid reason, okay.
Okay, and then we can deny it, and council can deny it.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
All right.
And also, maybe, um, you, you will have several meetings about what's going on in the, um, neighborhood, you know? It's just start with one and, and see what happens there, but when, as a, um, planning, planner, um, I'm, I have worked with several, um, neighborhoods in areas, you know, not even in, in Michigan, but it's a, um, ongoing process until you have the right fit. And so.
And so, I understand that, but what I keep hearing from this body and from city council is, okay, developers, owners, go have a meeting with the resident, with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
We know one meeting is not.
That word, "A."
Yeah, yeah.
That word, "A."
Uh, next on the list, Sandra Savage. Keith Harris. Betty Smith.
Okay, my question is, if it doesn't work out this first meeting, do we have to come back to this board to request that you send us back together again?
If I may, if I may through the chair.
How's that communication gonna work?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, the petitioner is, has the right to due process. He may find, he may go to one meeting with you, make some changes to the plan, come back and say to the planning commission, "We've made some changes, this is the plan, we want to move forward." They have the right to, to move forward that plan.
Okay.
You have the right, just as you have today, to again, have a public hearing, to voice your concerns with regard to that. The planning commission then, as a planning commission, then can decide, hey, you know what, it doesn't sound like you've come to a conclusion yet, we want you to go back and meet again. They can postpone it again. Or the petitioner can say, you know what, this is the plan, I'm not making a change, therefore, I want the planning commission to make a decision one way or another on that. They can vote to, they can vote, again, as a recommending body, they can recommend for or they can recommend against. Regardless, it still goes to city council. Regardless of what, because council has the ultimate authority, they are the ones who say yea or nay, yes or no.
Exactly.
And give a final approval. So, again, based on what comes of a meeting or two meetings or three meetings, however many it takes, between now and October 23rd, the developer can come to this body and say, you know what, we've done all that we can, this is the plan we want, um, to bring forward and voted on. And they have the right to do that.
And we have the right to say, okay, we need to go back to the table.
Yes, you do, sure. And then it's up to the planning commission as to whether they believe, is there enough merit here to say maybe they didn't do enough to try and, and, and solve, resolve the issues? And they could say, you know what, we want to postpone it again, go back to the table. The planning commission can do that, or they could vote on the, on the plan that's before them.
Okay. So, it'll be, okay. All right, so my, my next question is, how are you guys appointed to your positions? Are you appointed by the mayor or do we vote on you guys? How did you become to sit on the planning commission?
They're appointed by the mayor and approved by the council.
They're, okay, you're appointed by the mayor, but had to be approved by the council.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just a little curious, this is new for me. You know, I like to fight. I like to fight for what I believe in, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Oden.
Can he speak, uh, are you on the list, Mr. Morris? Are you on the list?
No, not Mr. Morris. Pigford. You want to come up here and speak? Sir. I need about 10, about 10 seconds.
If I, if I may through the chair, if he's not on the list.
In.
You have to be, you have to be on the list to speak right now.
Can I concede to him? Because I basically.
I'm sorry, if I may through the chair, if you can give me your name, please.
David Pigford.
Okay, you are on the list. You're just farther down.
Okay, thank you, thank you kindly, thank you kindly. I just need about 10 seconds. Is there any representation here from the police department, fire department, or emergency response crews? Okay, I know that there are things in the neighborhood that need to be input and it impacts the design. I'm an architect, a historic preservationist, I know, I'm an environmental designer as well. So, we need those people, if you have anything to do with them.
If I may through the chair, both the police department, the Crime Prevention Bureau, as well as the fire marshal, did get a copy of the plans. So, we do get, um, comments from both. From the standpoint of the fire marshal, he had no issue with the design that is presented with regard to being able to get proper fire trucks on and off the site, as well as locations of, of fire hydrants. With regard to the police department, let me see if I've got, uh, Kelly Buckberry with Crime Prevention did respond with regard to exterior, interior service doors, operating windows, parking areas and driveways, and lighting required, uh, the requirements for exterior service doors, they be steel construction, um, glass panels, uh, and so on. Those were the recommendations made by the Crime Prevention Bureau.
That's it?
Yes, sir. They're the experts, so we would do rely on them to provide us with comments based on the site plan.
I understand.
Okay, I'll sit. Thank you.
Can I say something? Okay. All right, um, I just want to say, um, this project, um, and I know you guys understand what we're saying, I know you really do understand it. But this project, um, the mayor paid $800,000 for this project. And I think market value would have probably went down on that property, he could have got it for a lot less. He says he has to develop apartment, so on it. He has to put apartments on because he paid so much for it. But I believe that that property would have dropped and a person might have developed some homes or something on that property. And it's just, uh, I think this was a bamboozle of all the neighbors. It was just, uh, you know, they knew they had all the possible, they had everything laid out and they knew what they were doing. And they, you know, I passed out flyers in that neighborhood. You know, I, we made up flyers, we passed it out, just about everybody in that neighborhood was against this apartment building. So, I'm just saying, you know, it's just, uh, this is a mess and it's a wear down, you got another meeting, another meeting, another meeting. And they, you know, they know it, they know it. And they just want this building up. And I, I'm telling you, I love my community, I'm out, I win awards for my home, I think I said it at the council meeting, I'm out there cutting my hedges every week. I don't even allow a landscaper to come in. I'm just saying, I have passion for this community. And I just think it's a doggone shame why, how they're doing this. And they're going to retire, they're going to leave us with the mess. That's what's going to happen. And you know how it's been done, it just continues. So, we, somewhere, we need the people to stand up and fight for our communities. Because if we don't fight, who's going to fight for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Morris. Earl Savage. Margaret Royal. Devon Owens. Karen Ludford? I'm sorry.
Do I need to say my name and address again?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Devon Owens, my address is 18725 Capital Drive, um, Southfield, 48075. So, when this was presented to us, I had some questions. Um, and the first question that I asked was, I felt that this was a conflict of interest. So, the mayor's nonprofit corporation purchased the property. So, there's a council member that was appointed, so if that council member was appointed to the mayor's, um, nonprofit corporation as the secretary. So, then full disclosure should have been available for all of us and we should have been included in the process. So, the individual that then, I don't know if they purchased the property or if it was given to them, but, and I looked this all up, but I didn't bring the paperwork with me. So, I believe his name was Milton and he is actually the treasurer of the mayor's nonprofit corporation. So, he has the corporation now that, I don't know if it was purchased or given, um, and it's under a directorship, so the board members do not have to be disclosed. Um, so, my thing is that we were never involved. I don't think it was meant for us to be involved. I think that, um, the mayor just came to our meeting just to let us know that this is what's going to happen. And we as a community, we're just very upset about that because we live here. So, it appears that this was already been put into place and it was just presented to us to pacify us as a community. And I think that's wrong and I think it's a huge conflict of interest because of the positions that are held by the individuals that are part of this process. So, I would hope that when we meet, I don't see the significance of meeting at the school. It's in bad shape, there's no significance to meet there, there's not going to be a place to sit. If the ceilings are falling in, somebody could get hurt. And I would hope that we could have a meeting where each entity can be present at that meeting. It shouldn't be just the mayor and the architects, there should be other departments that are included in that as well. And there should be full disclosure. It shouldn't be that you ladies and gentlemen just got it last week. This has been going on since May. The property was purchased, I think, May 6th or May 9th. Our meeting was May 16th. This is just wrong, how this whole process has been going. So, had we not came and raised our voice, then it just would have happened. And that's wrong. So, how can that be allowed to happen? It's just not right. So, a meeting with just the mayor and the architects is not going to solve anything. We need to have some other departments, there are some other people there to help intervene with the process. We all believe that something needs to be done with the school, we believe that, we're not against that.
Okay.
But we want to be included.
Okay, thank you. Karen Ludford.
Karen Ludford, 18756 Capital Drive. Um, I want to touch again on the purchase of this land. I know this may be a little bit off course, but it's something to think about. The Southfield nonprofit purchased this land from what the mayor said for $800,000. The original, when this nonprofit was set up for the city of Southfield, its goal and its mission was to provide housing, affordable housing for our seniors back in the 70s. Online, it appears that their mission has not changed. So, I don't understand how we can go from being a nonprofit, helping people, to now trying to make a profit. What the nonprofit did, like Devon said, they sold it or they gave it to one individual who can act as a director for the, for another nonprofit. We want that individual who probably is the one running the show to come up here. The only people who win in this is the developers and the new condo owners. The individuals, the prop, the residents of Washington Heights, we lose. You cannot tell me that that apartment complex or that condo complex will increase the value of that neighborhood. Because it says, I'm reading the Rudd, ensuring compatibility of design and use between neighbor, neighboring, um, properties. That's not happening. We are R4 zone, single dwelling. And I believe, I may have read it wrong, that it says the maximum building high, um, coverage for that type of building, our single families, can only be 25%. But on this Rudd here, you have a maximum, a person could build a maximum of a building of 75%. It's taken up all of the green space. If we have to have a lot of green space, then these apartments have to. If I, I need to go back in the code because it's not keeping in, um, in compliance with the regular zoning code. Because I was told that a lot of this is flexible and, um, they're just running off the rail. Those garages are a big concern. They are touching the sidewalk four feet from here to here and then you're going to see a garage wall. They didn't plan well for this. I like the ideal of reusing the school because I'm a historical person, I like historical buildings and I like that. But the garages seem to mess it up, um, the parking is going to be all on the side for the visitors. It's not going to raise the value of our homes.
Okay, thank you, your time's up. Thanks a lot. Lisa Connor. Linnell Wilson, I do need, if I may through the chair, thank you. Linnell Wilson Boone. Kiana Lenton. Douglas Moore. Okay, Mr. Chair, that are, those are the names that were on our list for this evening. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, next on the agenda, any miscellaneous? Yeah, um, we do have items for your September agenda. There are a couple of ones, obviously, that were postponed. We did postpone earlier, uh, the project up on 12 Mile Road. So, that'll be coming back to you. The hope, as I had noted earlier, was going to be on September 18th. That's the date that we have proposed to the developer so that they can come back, not only with the residents of the area, but then with the planning commission as well, in the hope of being able to iron out any issues that remain on that project. We do have another project coming in on Farm Brook, an apartment complex. They're going to be ready to come before you on the 11th. So, what we'd like to do is cancel your September 4th meeting and then have you come back on September 11th. And then hopefully the 18th with your regular meeting, then on the 23rd. Or 25th. Okay. 25th, yes. So, that's, staff's recommendation is to cancel your September 4th meeting. Good, okay. And how about as far as the commission pitchers? Yeah, I'd actually, we'd actually forgotten about that. I know that, um, I don't have my phone with me unless someone wants to take one this evening and then email it to us, then we can see that that. and then email it to us, then we can see that that gets on the city's website. I don't know if you're ready to take a picture this evening or not. I'm seeing, I'm shaking, I'm seeing heads shake, no. So what we can do then is, why don't we plan on having a picture taken on the 11th of September? If I recall, though, you're not gonna be in town. Okay, we do want to make sure that, that Mr. Martin is in the picture as well, so we'll be looking at September 23rd or 25th, because I think that's when you said you'd be available.
Back to 25th.
The 25th, yeah.
I mean, if somebody wants to take my cellphone and snap it, get it over with.
It's, it's up to the commission. I mean, if I can take a picture this evening, or we can wait.
Let's get it over with.
All right, well, why don't we at least adjourn the meeting and then we can take a, take a picture.
He's adjourned.